892nd Special Meeting of the Board of Directors of MSAD 27, roll call.
Keith Jandro.
Here.
Isabel Lojia.
Here.
Abigail Kuhler.
Here.
Toby Jandro.
Here.
Barry Ulllet.
Here.
Gary Sibley.
Here.
Sarah Ashley.
Here.
And I see that our two student reps, Gabby and Kaylin, are connecting Zoom.
Any adjustments to be made?
I do not have any adjustments, but I would like to welcome Abigail Kuhler. Abigail has been appointed by Tom in Canada. With Jake's departure, Gabby is a 2016 graduate of Community High School. And I told her you would all be very nice to her. Welcome, Abigail.
Thank you.
Public participation. Approval of minutes for the 890th meeting, December 12.
Done.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Approval of minutes for the emergency meeting, 891, on December 30?
Done.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Superintendent?
The first thing I have for you is some DOE news and updates. The Department of Ed has notified us that the federal government eased their timeline restrictions on our CRM plans. I wish we would have known that a little bit earlier, because we were on track. There were a few projects, though, that we were getting concerned about. Some of them dealing with our various technology upgrades, specifically from Third Eye Global, and then also our locker room project here at CHS. Now, we have an extension. It's actually till the end of 2021, but they're looking to have all projects done by June 30, and I should say 2021, and then invoicing by September 30, so they can close out there and by the end of the year. So that gives us a little bit of flexibility. We also learned that through the new stimulus package, main schools are going to have their share of the education allocation. And we're expecting an allocation in this new, what they're calling ESR 2, to be about four times the size of our ESR 1. ESR 1 was the original CARES Act that we got back in April, I believe, and we had a $193,000 allocation. So things point to that being quadrupled. The good news about this allocation is that we'll have till 2023 to use the funds. So these are more long-term planning things. And I'm hopeful that, given the nature of remote learning and how that's probably going to be something more long-term, you know, hopefully we can look at some long-term planning around staffing specific to remote learning, because we have met a lot of our needs with, you know, media technology and safety. Now we can start to look at that. So we'll discuss as we go, once we get the allocation, and then definitely welcome the board's suggestions on our best way to use those allocations over the two-year period. For the superintendent's meeting last Thursday, we did talk about the ESR allocations. We talked about vaccinations. Right now, the priority for the DOE is getting all school nurses vaccinated. I do believe that our school nurses have been vaccinated with their first shot, and that was through the Northern Maine Medical Center. For staff, for education staff, all indications point to the group 1B, which is where educators lie to be. Vaccinations become available mid-February, early March, although the Governor Mills administration did announce today that they're taking some of those 1B folks, especially those who are age 70 and above and younger with underlying health conditions and trying to address it now. So that may move up our timeline, hopefully. So right now, what our school nurses are doing, they're gathering data specific to our staff, numbers of people who are going to want the vaccination, so that when it becomes readily available, we can quickly tell the DOE or whoever is distributing, this is how many we need, and we can get that ball rolling rather quickly. I know a lot of our education staff is looking forward to that announcement, and so we hope that comes sooner than later. Also, we talked about the color coding designations. As you all know, Aurora County on December 28 was still coded as a green county with an asterisk. And the asterisk means that we're being closely monitored because of the spike in increases for our county. We are still the sixth lowest county in Maine for positivity rate, but because we climbed so quickly to that sixth mark from virtually the last place, we do have that designation. I believe that new color code is either coming out, I believe it's coming out Friday. So we'll know more Friday about what the state has decided for Aurora County. EB279s, that's our state funding. I did share with you the governor's budget proposal, which does add more funds for education, which is good news. That will be applied to the EB279, so that we can see our numbers. Of course, you know, decreasing student enrollment for various factors, including homeschooling this year and some other factors. Valuation of communities, that's all in place. So we hope to know what our numbers are by the end of the month. They're promising before the end of January. And that's all I have for DOE news. Any questions? The next item I have for superintendent is earned pay leave. Now Maine has passed a new law, the Earn Pay Leave Law. That went into effect January 1. Under the law, private employers, private and public employers with at least 10 employees in Maine must provide their employees with one hour of paid leave for every 40 hours worked, with a maximum of 40 hours paid leave per year for any reason. We do suspect that schools were overlooked when they were pushing this law through, because now, under the law, we must offer earned pay leave to our substitute teachers, the very people we bring in to take over for the people who are gone. We now have to give time away to, and our athletic coaches are going to earn paid leave, and we're not quite sure how that's all going to work. Right now, anyone under a current bargaining agreement, which is our teachers, our ed techs, our teamsters, the law does not apply to them until their bargaining agreement expires. That's to give time for us to negotiate how the law is going to play into their time. As you know, take the teachers, for example. We give teachers two personal leave and 14 sick days, or 15? 15 sick days every year. So we already give 17 days. The law is for 40 hours, which is eight days. It's just how we now rename some of those 17 days as earned pay leave days. So those personal days will probably go away, and those will definitely be earned pay leave, but we may have to trade some sick days for earned pay leave. It actually gives the employees some more flexibility than before. They can actually pay time off on an hourly basis instead of quarter day, half day increments. But it does make things interesting. Lucy, did you want to add anything else to that?
No, you've summarized it really well. The only difference in sick leave versus earned paid leave is earned paid leave can be used basically as a personal day. It can be used for any reason at any time. But if it's a planned leave, they have to give notice. But if it's an emergency leave, they can just usually let us know. Whereas a sick day, you can only use when you're ill. So it does provide more flexibility to the employee.
Is this a use it or lose it scenario, or at the end of the year, if they haven't used it at the end of the school year?
The law provides that EPL must carry forward. However, if it carries forward, the next year, they can only ever earn 40 hours in one year. So our plan is to let them carry it forward as sick leave or vacation leave, depending on which leave we converted to EPL, so that the employee never has less leave than what they currently have.
Our non-bargaining agreement folks, like our administrators and our central office staff, have already been converted. So that's already been done in our financial system. So now when I log in, I see less vacation days, but that's been transformed over to EPL days. It's the same, it's equivalent, it's just an hour versus days. So we're already adhering to the law for those who began on January 1. And I did provide a link in the electronic version of the superintendent notes, if you guys want to be more about that. Any questions on that? Remote learning update, I do have our building administrators here. We also have a couple of teachers here, if you'd like to ask them any questions as well. But if I could have maybe Mr. Neto start talking, just informing the board about how things are going with remote learning at Fort Monmouth, please.
Well, just to kind of go back to the spring, I feel like it really felt like we were building that car as we drove a little bit, with everybody learning all the technology, the kids learning it, the parents learning it at home. Very, very big difference this year in terms of the kids. We were able to teach the kids how to use the pieces of software that they need to be able to use before they went up to work. Teachers, a lot more consistency with teachers in terms of what they're using and what they're sending out. So a much better experience this time, in terms of what we're using, our consistency in what we're using, and then the kids' ability to use it. Some of the challenges is, I would say, in the spring, a lot of people went home from work. So a lot of those kids that were at home, particularly younger kids, they had somebody at home to help with the facilitation of learning. This time, a lot less people are at home from work. So that's been a little bit of a struggle in terms of, you know, teacher schedules, be able to meet up with parents or discuss things with parents. But overall, much more positive experience, but still challenges with remote learning.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Ms. Barrett, please.
Yeah, pretty much near what Mr. Neto had to say. It's just going quite well. Actually, our attendance, like, say, this year at CHS before remote learning was about 91%. And during remote learning, we're actually 1% higher, 92%. Of course, that's last days, but it just shows you how much we're buying. Our teachers have done a wonderful job of really learning their technology and learning how to do remote. You know, it's a money curve. And we got the bugs out last spring and this fall, I mean, this winter, I should say. It's been awesome, and, you know, kids have been participating. We keep a little list of kids that, you know, maybe that have lost a little contact and, you know, at guidance service and administration, have kind of keeping up. As well as the teachers trying to get in touch with these kids, they're trying to get them back in. But overall, we're in good shape. You know, we've got, after this week, about two weeks left to the end of the semester. And, you know, very promising with what we're doing with data. So the money, the days, as I said last year, the days at the end of the year really helped, you know, to prep us. And the kids, you know, I think the teachers are doing such a good job at keeping the kids there, as well as our schedule changes that we've made this year. It's a lot easier to follow. They have about three quarter classes each day, instead of trying to pull it all six until last year. So we learned a lot last year, and this year was real payoff.
I don't know if the board wanted to ask, any of the teachers in the room, questions specific to remote learning?
But you're here.
Does anybody want to share thoughts, feelings?
I think right now, like today, I went home for the first time since March feeling good. Today was a good day. Everybody showed up, engaged, and I was like, I'm a little nervous for Tuesday because of the hitch drive. Do you know what I mean, the hitch drive? And it's been really positive. The kids show up on time, literally within 30 seconds. I got 22 kids on my screen, videos on, and I'm like, this is better than in the school. And that was today, I'll take today for today. Do you know what I mean? But it's a big difference from spring, like Robbie said, for me, anyway. Meant to wait and just doing my job well, you know what I mean? So.
I teach fourth grade, if anybody doesn't know, but we find this in law better than it was in the spring, definitely, for sure. We worked really hard at the beginning of the school year to prepare the kids to be able to go remote. So we, like, front-loaded all that technology that they needed, so that if we ever did go remote. But same as Margaret, you know, within two, three minutes, all of our kids are on, their videos are on. We really have very few that don't show up on time. If they do, you know, a quick hangout message, or Facebook to their parents, or something like that, and they're on quickly. So I feel like in the winter, fall, whenever we went, spring, I guess, last year, whenever we went remote, learning kind of like stopped, and we just kept them where they were as best as we could without really pushing them forward. And I feel like this time, no learning has stopped. Like, we've introduced new standards, we've taught new standards, we've tested new standards, all since we've been remote. So whereas before, we just were trying to hold them there and not let them slide back, now I feel like we've learned enough that we're really moving forward. And I do know that from colleagues that it's different at the pre-K to 2 level, because they have less, like, ability to do it themselves. But everybody has learned so much.
Thank you. Any questions? With that, it segues into what our plan is now that we're nearing the two-week point, I would have been calling a break. As you all know, we had met with Dr. Roberts' school nurses back on December 28 to discuss the plan moving forward. And at that time, we would agree that a two-week period to see what was happening after the holiday break, get a good idea, figure out close contacts of positivity, and then transition into a hybrid model was a good plan. We met again this Monday. Dr. Roberts gave about an hour of her time to meet with union leadership and discuss that plan. I did share that video out to all of you. If you haven't watched it, I would suggest that you do. Dr. Roberts was really, really did a good job in trying to explain, you know, why kids need to be in school and how schools are simply not a super spreader, as we once feared that they may be, because people are gathering in large quantities. And the fact that we were starting with a hybrid model, which ensures six-foot distancing, which is the maximum, or not the maximum, but the ideal social distancing required, along with our hand hygiene, our masking, and everything else that we're doing, she felt very strongly that it is what's best for kids, it's what's best for families, and we can do that safely, because schools have proven to be safe. I do have Nurse Monet on Zoom, if you have any questions specific to what we discussed from a medical standpoint. I too am nervous about Tuesday, because anytime you go from one thing that's unknown to something new, it's always going to be a source of anxiety. But I also know that as much as our teachers are rocking out remote learning, these kids are still behind a screen, and they need some interaction with one another. And this is why we've spent so much money on safety protocols. This is why we've spent so much money on technology to deliver to those who know they can't return. We still have remote learning as an option to those who know they can't return. This is why we have all this in place, so that we can take medical advice and make a sound decision based on what's best for everyone. And in the event that something happens and we have positivity in our school, we know we can go back to remote, and we can do so without missing a step. But we're hopeful that, you know, what we've seen and what Dr. Roberts has shared with us for data is going to really be the way to move forward. I don't know if the board has any questions, any questions for Nurse Monet? Anything to discuss with regards to that plan?
I've just got one, I've got one question about, I don't see a motion, recommended motion here, so it doesn't look like the board are going to be voting on it.
You guys have the right to vote on it.
Okay. And from the Monday's discussion with the union, it didn't look like, like, it looked like the decision had not even been made. I guess I just wanted to know when the decision was made, who was at the table?
So when we originally shared the plan, as I explained a while ago, it was based on the meeting with Dr. Roberts' school nurses, and they came with their recommendation that we formulated that plan.
And that was back in the December 28?
December 28, yeah.
What's been the response from the teaching staff?
Teachers are nervous. They're nervous. And you get a different flavor for that across different grade levels. And I don't want to speak for, you know, a majority or whatever. From those who I've spoken through, from the younger grade levels, they recognize remote is not doing justice. So I think for them, it's important to get kids back. Whereas from a high school level, kids are following their schedule remotely, it's working. And so I think here, it's a different tone, where, like, as Margaret said, you know, they're doing it. What's hard is that if you send some students back and not some other students, and trying to navigate those waters with the feeling that teachers will have about their own safety, well, why is it good for us but not for the others? I'm nervous about that. So you kind of have to lump everyone in the same, use our medical advisors to guide us with what we know, what they know to be the facts, and then move forward from there. But no, teachers are definitely nervous, administrators are nervous, I'm nervous.
So in reading the plan, one of my questions is, we used to have an objective outside source that we would use as a guidepost. If I read the new plan correctly, we no longer use an objective outside source. We disregard community spread?
No, what we're doing is we're relying on the state of Maine's community spread, their color coding system. Because that, we know, you know, the hospitals are reporting data to the CDC, and they're using accurate data. What we can't rely on anymore is our own St. John Valley case count, because when that was below 10, it was easy to figure out. Now it's no longer easy anymore, especially when you had antigen testing at Walgreens, false positives, false negatives, that are not being reported to the hospital or the CDC. So the fear was, if we try to use that as a benchmark, we'd be using false data, no matter how you look at it. So the advice was to look at what's happening in our schools and our families of school-aged children, and use that as our measuring post about, you know, because that's the data we do know.
So procedurally, like, as far as, like, if a parent's watching from home, when the state goes to yellow, then our, that's the signal that we are going to be changing?
Yep.
Okay, it's not going to be from us, it's going to be from the state?
Well, it's still from us, because schools have the choice. As a board, you have the choice to say, no, we don't want to do what the state is advising us to do. We ought to do this, and then you have the right to do that. And then as a school, we are still going to monitor closely what's happening in our school, so that if we do have a positivity rate in our school, you know, if a classroom now has two or three impacted students, well, that's our flag to say, okay, we've got to move to this model. And that was a part of our original plan as well. But what we can't do now is say, if it's, you know, between 7 and 13, we're going to do this. Or we don't know those numbers anymore, so it becomes very difficult. We can still get a gauge based on, because it's a small community, so we know when something happens at nursing home A or hospital B, you know, we could do that. And then I think we did that for the, you know, for the plan to stay as a remote learning coming out. And we'll still continue to do that. But what I can't say honestly with a straight face is say, this is what our St. John positivity rate is. I don't know that. And Dr. Roberts was honest about that, too. She says, she doesn't know that.
So when we started, we had, I mean, we had the original plan that we had set to work. Do we have something akin to that that's available to the public to kind of see, like, what our triggers are, what our benchmarks are, what our hot watermarks are, like, kind of what we're watching? So if people are paying attention from home, they can kind of see how things are going? Because I think that's the, no, it's not intentional, and I'm not trying to fight.
Oh, no, no.
But I think the perception is that this was a Star Chamber decision, and we don't, we got it, and nobody understood it. And I don't think it's because it's intentionally being hidden, I just, I don't understand it, and I'm having a hard time to see it.
Yeah.
So I think it'd be nice if there was some real transparency, not like, here's what we're going to be doing tomorrow, but this is what we're doing going forward. If A happens, this is our response. If B happens, this is our response.
Yep.
That's all.
No, and I appreciate the question. And I think our current plan still is intact. So our current plan still does say, this is what happens with the counties. And we're clear on that. And like I told you guys a while ago, if Aurora County gets put into a yellow designation, you can come back and say, no, we're more comfortable staying green, or we're more comfortable going red. I wouldn't advise you to do that. I'm kind of saying, hey, if the state's telling you to do something, stick with it. But with regards to our local case count, we did drop numbers and put words like low, moderate, and high or new. What we can't, what's difficult for people to, and this is still what Dr. Roberts is kind of using as a guide, but moderate to a fourth-grade teacher and moderate to a health advisor are going to be different. And so I have to trust what the health advisor is telling me versus what we perceive as to be moderate or high. If you ask, if you ask a lot of people locally, they'll all say we have a high spike of cases because we were so low before. But when you compare us to Cumberland, we're still so very low. So it's hard to use those things. So we can make this a little more, a little more refined, Toby, to kind of smooth the waters over a little bit. But I think what's most important is this final, this final column here, which has always been part of our plan, active school cases. That's our, that's our, that's our trump, you know, that trumps everything else. If we have positivity in schools, then we can no longer say schools are safe. And that's what Dr. Roberts was speaking to, that right now, schools are safe. Every case that we have that's positive right now did not happen in school. So that's a good thing. I don't know if that helps.
Ben, how many Aurora County schools are in the role?
Us, Valley Unified and Mars Hill just went in, because they have a local business of our nursing care facility, Elbury.
When you earlier said that remote is still available, is that, like, if, like you said, like, you mentioned fourth-grade teachers, but like, a mom's perspective is super nervous. Can she do, continue with? can she do, continue with remote until, and like I know it was quarterly and stuff, and then two weeks, but like for this next two weeks? If they're freaked out, they can stay in remote?
I'll let the principals tell you what they're doing for just those. So I don't know, Mr. Coletta, if you want to. If a parent right now is requesting remote because they don't want to go back to hybrid next week.
Right, so what we're doing is we're taking that case by case. We haven't advertised that, but we've had people call. And then what we'll do is we'll take a look at your child's record and how well they've done in remote. Well, so sure, your child has done well in remote. If you feel that this is best for your child, that's fine. You know, and then let's say they haven't done well in remote. We'll just say, hey, they haven't done well in remote. We recommend that, you know, you come to school. But, you know, once again, this is your decision, it's your family. And then we've started a list of students right now.
Mr. Coletta?
So right now, we do have a list of students whose parents have called and requested remote. We have asked for a third quarter commitment. Part of the reason for that is depending on the numbers that we do have requesting remote, we may have to shuffle some of our staff around in order to meet those needs. What we don't want to have happen is, you know, a week from now, people are a little bit more comfortable coming into school and then all of a sudden we have a staff member that we've asked to teach them all the creative classroom, get everything ready for this, and then oh, all of a sudden there's no need to. Now she's back in the classroom, getting things ready for her. So I didn't think that would be fair of staff. Although we do want to have that remote option for people, maybe they don't feel that their kids are safe coming to school. Or the conversations I've had are people don't want to have their students coming into school to make it a unsafe environment. It's not that they don't feel safe at school, it's they want to make sure schools stay the same. Depending on jobs.
I mean, I think as a board member, we should keep, we should keep that as an option until, like, the board decides otherwise. Like, I think a lot of parents are really afraid that, I've had a couple of calls saying, I'm reading these things and it says we're not going to be, we're not going to be doing remote anymore. And they're freaking out for various reasons. Either they're living with a grandparent who's immunocompromised, a lot of sending the kids, you know, good reasons. And I'm like, I don't think that's what's happening. But I understand reading between the lines and the uncertainty that that's what they're inferring.
Yeah.
So I guess, I guess I would, I guess I would just make a motion. I move that we allow the option of remote pursuant what Mr. Coletta and Mr. Robby are doing, sorry, Mr. Neto, are doing, until the board is asked to do otherwise.
And that's already part of your plan. Your plan says, your board of board members says we will have remote learning available to those users.
Okay, I just want to make sure it doesn't change unless we vote to change it.
No, I mean, we would not change it on your behalf. If you want to keep remote learning for the next, I think the state of Maine is going to mandate us to keep it.
Okay. I was just looking to make people feel better.
If you want to make a motion, that's fine, that would be fun. It's our, we are not saying we can't do remote anymore.
And I really like that you're doing that, John. I think that's a great idea. I made myself some notes because I get a lot of phone calls. I think, I think I would, I have no interest in doing this personally, but I know it might not be a bad idea. Because this is just me speaking as a board member. There's a lot of information that came in from Dr. Roberts and whatever. And I think I would feel better if we had maybe had some board buy-in, like a subcommittee on COVID. So when the meetings happen, we can kind of hear it. So when people are like losing their minds at us, sometimes happens, or when they just have good questions, we'll know that it was discussed. And if it wasn't discussed, we can bring it forward to the group. I, as I said, I'm already on like three different committees, I have no interest. But I guess I would suggest that we have at least one or maybe two board members available to be at those discussions when they're happening. How does the board feel about that?
Would it be an easy solution, instead of making another committee? Every time one of those meetings occurs, I reach out to you and say, is there anybody who would like to sit in on the meeting and then just open it up to all of you? Because you're all busy.
I don't care. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. As long as, you know, five of you don't say yes.
No, I have to worry. It's hard to get people to do any of the kind of stuff.
And remember, board members, if you're going to get tough questions, feel free to refer those individuals to me. You know, that's my job and I know you don't mind fielding those, but, encourage folks to call us up again or call the bridge school. And we'll call the school next and then we'll look at it. Is one of us driven? Winter sports updates. So currently, while in a remote model, our coaches are sharing workout plans. They're zooming with kiddos. They're urging, you know, kids to access, you know, practices this way rather than this way, and that's all totally fine. And that's perfectly great. But what we had in mind, and this is something that you can all decide whether it's a good plan or not, we're of a mindset, when I say we, I'm speaking primarily with Mr. Dusset and Mr. Coletta right now in the moment about athletics. We feel that when students do return to school next week, we should open athletics back up so that they can begin preparing and getting ready. A lot of the schools in Arustic have done that and they're actually starting games now. We're only a week or so behind, so it's not, you know, so far behind, but we feel that it would be best to move forward with sports. And, you know, reminding our coaches about their own guidelines with cohorting and all of those things and face masking, so they'd be following their own protocols. But just because we're in a self-imposed hybrid doesn't mean we can't offer sports. If Arustic shifts us into a hybrid, then all of Arustic has to stop. But our own self-imposed hybrid, we can choose to do that if we feel that's better. And that's our plan unless you don't feel comfortable with that.
We're talking both practices and games?
Yep. Games and meets would be restricted to just Arustic only. And we would not go play any, any school that is in a remote model. So Mars Hill right now is remote. They may be remote next week. We wouldn't go play Mars Hill.
So the cohort days do cohort A, only practice on cohort A days, cohort B, only go on B days?
We would have the teams form their own after-school cohorts and allowing them to play together.
Because if you're going to have a game, it doesn't make sense.
Right.
Only allowed half of the team to go to the game?
Had I thought of it, I would have thought maybe just put our athletes in the same cohort, but,
Oh, come on, Ben.
Does that sound okay for the board?
Does wrestling go?
Wrestling is a deal. Mr. Neto was actually on the wrestling team. What's the latest update on wrestling?
Yeah, we have to wait until wrestling is, until things go down in the state. The committee is not that confident, but they did release some information regarding some return play guidelines for wrestling. The confidence of a season happening is global, but we're still hopeful that, but it's only going to be later this spring.
So the MPA moved away from their just no handshaking rule?
Yeah. Mr. Neto was a husband wrestling. I didn't share that before.
So how do you outfit?
It's wearing it right now?
I have a question. Oh, it wasn't a question, it was a comment. I think students are better behaved about following policies and procedures when there's adult round group fighting. Like at a practice, as opposed to just out giving stuff around.
We live with sports?
Yes.
The next item I have is remote learning support for children of MSBD 20 staff. Prior to reintegrating, I did, we did put out a survey and I believe you have a copy of that teacher survey, return to school. And one of the questions in that survey was specific to their own children. And that's question three, is that regardless if students are in school or not, if mandated by the district to teach from your classroom this fall, would childcare for your own children be a concern? And we did have upwards of 30, if you count all the individuals, almost 40% of our staff saying, yeah, that's going to be a problem for me. Because they all remember being mom and teacher from their living room kitchen last spring, which I'm sure was super easy. It wasn't easy at all. So we knew that we had to do something in order to allow our staff to be employees when they're here and then have something for their children. We are not a licensed daycare, so we do not offer childcare for the children of staff. What we offer is for staff to bring their children to school so that they, moms and dads, can go work in their classroom and their children have a place to work, to work on their own schoolwork according to their own remote learning plans. This is facilitated or overseen by a collection of different ed techs and our temporary support personnel who rotate in and out and monitor. They have actually like a daily schedule where, you know, this hour is math time, this hour is reading time. They're not receiving direct instruction. It's not like they're coming to school to be taught by teachers or ed techs. They still have to go zoom in with their teacher at their zoom time and they have to do the work from their packets the same as they would at home. It's just that mom's not at home. And so we felt that offering this to our employees could ensure that our employees could do what we're asking them to do, which is part of why the response from teachers now is that this is so much better than it was in the spring. Because they can be teaching during their teaching time. So I know that some of you have received questions. Mr. Sibley did call me, you know, about this very same thing and I explained it to him as well. This was part of our plan to offer this for our staff. And it's been working really, really well. I have to commend our educational technicians that are helping with this. They're really excited about being able to contribute this way. And the staff, the moms and dads that have taken advantage of this can't say enough about how much it's meant to them. And I believe we have some of those moms here that if you would like to ask a question to, again, I'm sure they would share with you.
I don't know, I think it's an awesome idea and I think more employers should do it.
Yeah, and I'll talk, I'll totally testify to this. I have three small children. And on the eve of, it was December 6th, the eve of December 7th, and I was crying in my house, writing a letter to quit, like, I can't do it. And I brought my three kids to work the next day, I brought the pack and fight, I brought the crib, my two-year-old and my little kids, and we set up camp yoga mats and I did it. For two days I did that, in my classroom, in this building. And I was like, I can't do this. This is impossible. I cannot be what I signed my contract for and what I signed my contract for. You know what I mean? And the privilege of the service is like amazing. It's amazing. And I think we lean into the benefits of our employers a lot, right? Whether it's free tuition at U of K if you work there, or reduced prescriptions at the hospital. We lean into that so much and this was like a benefit out of left field. You know what I mean? And I scooped it up and it is like, I'm a teacher again and I'm really good at my job right now. You know, like, that wasn't happening since March. And so I really hope that it stays. I know that it's a privilege and I will never take that for granted, you know what I mean? And like, we're laughing in our zooms and I'm happy again and I'm like, this is a breakthrough. And I really am thankful that it mobilized so quickly. And my kids come home happy, their work is done, they zoom in on their own. They've been trained by amazing teachers to do this on their own. You know what I mean? Ed techs are making sure nobody dies, okay? And I'm so thankful for this. Like, I don't even know what I would do right now. I wouldn't be working right now. You know what I mean? Like, we were at that point. We were at the tipping point, you know? And so it quickly mobilized and my kids are taken care of while I'm in my job, which is a huge benefit that my employer made happen out of thin air. You know what I mean? So I'll take it when it's here. I'll take the good days when they come and they're coming a lot now. You know what I mean? So thanks for making it happen, so.
And just so you know, the details around it, it's only for elementary-age children. So pre-K, grade six, we, you know, after that, we were not having the older students participate in that. And we felt they're old enough to be able to, you know, manage themselves at home. And that's worked well. We've had some requests to have sub-7th and 8th and 9th graders volunteer. We don't want to mix the cohorts that way, so we've said no politely. And we don't take kids who would normally be in childcare. So we don't take, you know, below pre-K. And now where the childcare, we don't offer that as well. It's just for elementary-age kids. Sam?
I mean, I'd just like to echo that. I'm so, so grateful that this has come around for us. I'm in a bit of a different position, I can almost, you know, I'm a clinical social worker at the middle of the high school. And so as it relates to the confidential nature of my job, it was not good last year, you know? I am so fortunate that I have wonderful kids, but my six and eight-year-old completely raised themselves at the end of the year because I had to be in a completely different place, you know, because I hold our students up against, you know, two strict guidelines. And so just to know that I can be in my office, doing my job and my kids are happy and healthy and doing their work and they know what they're doing. I have six and a nine-year-olds and they know exactly what they're doing and they're just doing their thing over there. And I'm just so grateful. That among other things, like the, I'm reaching way more students than I did last year. So I think all around, as a social worker, I just feel like I'm able to do my job much better. And that's for numerous reasons, but a big part of it is having this available support.
I kind of feel, you know, the same way. If I think back to March and April, I would admit, I was kind of failing both as a mom and as a teacher because I couldn't do both at the same time and I really struggled hard. So whenever we heard that we were going back to remote, my husband and I actually had a discussion about what we were going to do and if I was going to continue teaching because I couldn't. I chose to be a teacher, but I also chose to be a mother and I didn't feel like I could do one well while trying to do both. So this was really like a godsend. I'm not from here. I don't have family. They can't go to Memmays. I don't have Aunt Lisa down the road. Like, I have no one. So I have wonderful in-laws that work, but I don't have just anybody that can take care of my kids. I don't have a plethora of family. I don't even have a plethora of friends, really. I mean, I moved up here as an adult. So, I mean, when you think about, like, I didn't have anybody. So it was either teach and take care of my kids. I couldn't do both. So this was really like the answer to my prayers, being able to bring my kids here. And, I mean, I teach one of my kids. I have a fourth grader and I teach fourth grade. But I teach him much better over Zoom than I ever do when he's sitting next to him. So just knowing that they go to, they go to school, they do all their work, they get everything done. And then at home, I still get to be a mom. And that really, I'll take it if it's offered. I'll hold on to it as long as I can and I really, really, really truly appreciate you doing this for us. I know a lot of moms and dads that have kids that take advantage of this, really appreciate it and we're very thankful for it.
So after the 19th or whenever teaching changes, what changes there?
So when we move into hybrid, their children on their non-school day will still go into hybrid support. So they still go to school every day, but one day they go to their classroom, the other day they go to their support room as they have.
I also kind of want to speak to the health side of this because enrolling my kids, I was like, this is a godsend, but I'm still nervous, right? And so in a way, I think it's acted as this like small pilot group to see, is it really spread in school, right? So they're really spread out, they're doing their thing, they're kind of.
So they're really spread out, they're doing their thing, they're kind of just, what will happen on Tuesday, essentially. And it kind of echoes what Dr. Roberts is saying is, they're doing okay, you know what I mean? Like, they made it through the pilot phase and I think that's how it's going to go Tuesday. So that gives me a little like peace of mind, even though I'm still nervous, you know what I mean? So in a way, I guess it's working. Like, it might just work, the plane might get off the ground here. So it's helped me kind of process the health angle, you know?
Any more comments?
How many teachers are taking advantage of that program?
You know how many?
What was the question?
How many teachers are taking advantage? I think it might be easier if you say how many children are.
Yeah. We have fifty-plus kids.
Oh, wow.
Yep. I believe when we gathered the data about our staff children, we looked at it and like, a fifth of our total population is like staff children, it's amazing. So.
We have fourteen fourth graders that are staff students.
Yep.
Wow.
Yeah, the concerns that came from the public were, you know, like you guys said, just stressed-out parents working, trying to balance everything and the perception that, well, why are the teachers' kids there?
Yeah, I get that. It's not fair, you know what I mean? It's not, but. You know what I mean?
I wish every work.
I know.
I wish that every parent could do the same thing.
I do too.
And one thing we've been very important to stress is that the kids that are here are with us at FKS right now, they're staff kids, but we're not allowing them really to have any added benefit from being at school those extra days. So we've had some teachers say, well, can I take this student? The question is, if they were home doing remote, would you be asking them to do an individual zoom? The answer is yes, then work with them. The answer is no, and it's just convenient because they're here, then we're not going to have an added educational benefit just because they're staff. We've been very, very adamant and very stressing that this one.
We just want to put it on the agenda, get it out there to the public so they will understand how it was working, what it was working.
And it was working. Thank you. You have administrator reports, you should have one from Mr. Dusev, you should have ones from.
Mr. Coletta.
Oh, Mr. Coletta, excuse me. Mr. Neto, Mr. Sose, and then you should have a chart of interesting facts from our special department, if you have questions about those, if you want to ask.
You got any questions?
I do.
Sarah?
I would have a question. Hey, John, on the Warrior Time and the Win Time, I feel like I'm always asking this question. The Win Time is what I need time, is that, in the beginning, I guess I thought that was like helping kids get up speed on stuff that they've missed and then the kids who aren't missing any targets were going to be challenged, is that time getting used still?
Yeah, incredibly, incredibly well. Yeah, it's, you know, it's each day, since our schedule was warped throughout the year, you know, we've kind of gone back to two o'clock, we tend to take, that was originally a block of time, the same as any other class, close to eighty minutes. And, you know, that was done for the, you know, this first part of the year, which can be handy, getting able to catch up on whatever they have. Then, once we went to two o'clock, we were able to squeeze time out of that instead of other classes. So one day it's a half an hour, the other day it's about forty minutes or so. Okay, and right now, teachers set up one-to-one zooms with their kids, the kids that are really having a tough, you know, tough time making it work, catching them up, you know, getting, you know, doing whatever, you know, time like in math where you really need that one-on-one, they're able to do that with their kids. During that Win Time, it's either on, I think it's a green date, it's at the end of the day and white date's beginning of the day. And then at Warrior Time is at lunch. So right now, right around lunch, there's about seventy minutes and twenty-five, or as you say, so about fifty minutes of that is Warrior Time, you know, and so kids, the teachers will eat during that time right now and then also do, you know, a lot of those one-on-ones. Okay, so it's been very effective, maybe learned.
Yeah, I can, I have a Win Time. So Win Time caught my housekeeping time, so like, we meet as a group, they log in and I kind of like give the rundown, like, okay, Tuesday, here's what Tuesday's going to look like, everybody know what group they're in. I do like, it's like the mom, the hen comes out with me and everybody. Then we kind of go through other classes, like, what do you have, Mr. Sibley, who has Mr. Sibley stuff, and we kind of like climb in, halve, what to do, do you know what I mean? So we have, the first five minutes is kind of just like kumbaya, you know what I mean? Then there's this breakaway where, okay, you're good, you're good, you can go see this teacher, I'm keeping you on the line, buddy, do you know what I mean? So, so there's this kind of this independent time, then they can also kind of zoom over to another teacher if they need help. So I do find the Win Time's very helpful, it gives me time to kind of just do some housekeeping things upfront and then there's this breakaway phase, so.
Mr. Coletta, correct me if I'm wrong, we had more students at the high school taking online courses this fall than we've seen in a long time, am I right with that?
That's true, yep.
And so I know a lot of kids are taking advantage of doing an extra class during their Win Time and at the college course online.
Yeah, we're having more, quite a bit, we had twelve, I don't know which number, right around that number of sophomores taking early college classes. So, you know, before that was pretty much, you know, we had juniors and seniors during the, you know, early college high school, you know, Pleasant Street Academy, I think now it's called Valley U. But now we've got a lot more sophomores doing that as well, so it's, they're not part of that Valley U, they're taking online classes, you know, one or two a semester. We actually sent up today, we're having sign-ups for online classes by the nineteenth. Hear that out there TV land, sign up by the nineteenth.
Committee of Reports.
And I just put this item here, Negotiation Committee, we are going to enter teacher negotiations eventually in your future. And I know there's been conversation in past negotiations that we always show up to day one and we receive something from the other party, but we've never had a chance to sit and say, well, this is what we think. So I wanted to know from the Negotiations Committee if you felt like that would be a good use of a pre-negotiating meeting to talk about what's important to MSAD 27 and our realities as we go enter in good faith and negotiate. So it's just, it's just food for thought and right now our Negotiations Committee is Toby, Keith, Barry, we do have a vacancy, although I don't know that we could have a vacancy. We had put a fourth person there, but that would be a quorum, so I think we have to stay with three, am I right with that?
I think so.
I think so. We had added Jake, Jake wanted to be part of it, but I think if we added a fourth, it would be a quorum, so I think we have to stay with three, so that's.
I think we'd added somebody, Jake wanted an alternate because it seems like, it's really the only time Barry and I can be in the same room is this night, the rest of the time it's only one of us at a time.
Okay. So we have a vacancy.
I don't think I've ever been in negotiations with you in the same room, maybe once.
I remember a couple of times and it was long.
Yeah, I think it was your fault.
Very slow.
I think we should, I mean, having looked at some of these contracts, they have so much detrius left over, I think there's even reference to like where the teachers should park their horses, because we just keep recycling the same contracts. It might not be a bad idea to clean them and just bring them down to what we need because we just add, right?
Yep.
Like, these things are giant and probably not necessary to be that bad, so it might not be a bad idea to pull the contracts and like, take a one-model contract and see what kind of language we can get out because it's no longer pertinent or that, that's my thought because I feel like we go in and there's all this detrius that doesn't necessarily mean anything.
So what we could do is we could, we could go through that, our team, and then when we have some suggestions, bring the committee together and say, this is what we think. Or do you guys want to be part of that process of elimination?
I'm okay with just being CC'd on it. I would be content with that, I'm assuming you're not all like huddling together, I mean, I'd imagine it's mostly emailed, just CC us and I mean, that way I got some idea of what's in there and I could, and I'd like to see them too so I can start seeing if there's anything there that I have questions about. So we go in, we're prepared, I like, you're right, we often go in there and I feel like we're the only ones not prepared to be there.
We'll share a copy of the current contract, teacher contract with you guys and then as we look at different languages, we suggest something, we'll copy you in and we can do that one. Perfect.
Move on to items of business, old business, value of education.
And I think we can lump maybe A and B together because it's all pertinent. We do have a value unified meeting, we tabled the January meeting because honestly, I had no idea, I didn't know how to make an agenda for that meeting, I still don't. And we have a February one meeting. But I'm thinking the heart and soul of that agenda and that meeting has to be conversations about what we're doing, how we're moving forward, are we moving forward, are we not? And just conversations about that. So the regional school project aside and, you know, behind us, I think it's, it just needs to, we need to have conversations now about, all right, so what are we doing, what are we doing separately and what are we doing together as value unified? I have a document that I prepared for the Plan for the Future document and what I'm explaining in this document is it makes it very difficult to plan for the future when we don't know, we don't know what's currently in place, what we still want to be part of. So in that document, and I've shared this, I've shared this with the Madawaska School Committee on Monday, their own version of this with their letterhead, and I will be with thirty-three as well. But it's, you know, right now we're part of a strategic plan, that was a ten-year plan, I believe we're in year three, four, with SAD thirty-three and Madawaska and we have these priorities. And for the most part, the majority of those priorities are completed and/or underway. I look at Adult Ed, priority three, that's, you know, that's been, that's been done. Priority four, shared administrative structure, we've done that. Priority five, optimizing the tech center, you know, bringing new programming in and eighth graders, and so we've been working at that. Collaboration with UFK and NMCC, you know, we're working on some new things to expand opportunities. Mr. Coletta explained to you earlier that Pleasant Street Academy, as wonderful as it was, it became difficult for UFK to keep kids pegged into that same model because there's so much more offerings now at the college and kids want different things, they don't want to be co-horted in the same, you know, program, they want to have a little bit of flexibility, so that's underway as well, as well as talks with Northern Maine Community College. I mean, priority eight, optimizing use of technology, we've gone light years with our optimization of technology since March sixteenth, which is amazing. So looking at those, we have to think about which of those are still important to us, which of those we still want to, you know, keep as a guiding light. Moving down to Valley Education Service Center, you know, we have a lot of services right now that we currently share between the districts, superintendent, assistant superintendent, finance director, innovative programs, community outreach, curriculum coordinator, shared central office services, food director, health instructor, services of eighth grade, CTE program, career instructor services. We have a unified Power School, so right now when I log into Power School, which is our student information system, I see all three districts and I see all schools because that's been merged together. So we have a unified Power School that the state reimburses us for because we have an Education Service Center. We have our Unified Empower, that's our student learning management system, that's unified together. Our Tyler Technologies, which is our financial software and employee self-service, that is reimbursed by the state as well because we're unified. Time Clock Plus, we have a curriculum that's the same throughout the three districts. We share professional development and grant writing. So all of those shared services currently exist. And then we have our value unified vision goals where we established two-year goals last year. One of them was to create teams in school that focus on data to support, you know, our various school improvement processes. We have, we have a focus on climate and culture where we're examining the climate and culture at all times to figure out what works for us and what doesn't. And then we have these learning transform keys that our schools, all of our schools have done some asset gap analysis with to figure out, you know, how we can move that needle towards transforming learning. So fast forwarding to the last page of that, as we plan ahead, I guess we would need to decide as a board, you know, how we want to proceed with these shared things. Is it continuing as is with our current priorities, our current shared services? Obviously, you know, our priority number one, high school regionalization, that's probably not going to happen on a center school as you will, but, you know, we could still, we could still use the three high schools to, for lack of a better term, digitally regionalize with opportunities. We know now that if a teacher can zoom with kids from home and school, we can do that from school to school and have some success with that, so that might open up some doors. So do we stay with those goals and those shared services or an option two, are we looking to modify some? You know, some work for us, but some don't. And we need to go back to the drawing board about what works and what doesn't, not specific to those. Or are we saying that those shared services no longer work for us, we need to, you know, we need to have our own plan, we need to have our own strategic plan, specific to this district and these communities and focus on those things specifically. So I guess, I don't know how to help you unless I know what you want moving forward. And that's, and we don't have to answer that today, but that's just.
I don't think it will be answered today, but I think that we're going to need a response at some point in time from our commissioner.
I believe so. And I have not received anything. And to be fair, I haven't asked either. I figure that they're going to let us know as soon as they're ready to let us know. That is an open question.
I think we are, we've been talking about doing this retreat for like a year.
Yeah, and I do have that on the agenda, yeah.
Well, I think they work well together. I think as a board, we need to have a sit-down and discuss what we want and what we don't And I think the retreat would be a good time to do it. Do you guys?
I think, I think right now it'd be certainly premature.
Oh, yeah.
Make any sort of decision without first knowing what the commissioner and the state board wants to do going forward. I agree with Toby, we definitely, this isn't going to be handled in a regular board meeting. My thoughts on it are we probably need to take a step back and just do some sort of independent analysis. Maybe we need a budget for it for the next year, the next school year, to have some sort of outside analyst kind of look at this and see where we've come from and where we are now. And what's our best step forward after that?
From a dollar perspective?
Not just from a dollar perspective, just from efficiency and obviously what's best for the students and all of this. Because that's our number one priority is to continue providing stable learning environment.
May I announce some of the comments? And we'll talk more about the retreat, I'll call it workshop, retreat sounds familiar.
It sounds a lot more fun.
Jake likes calling it a retreat.
What's that?
Jake likes calling it a retreat.
I think I'm just saying that because Jake's not here, but it's just for him out there watching at home.
Just move on to the standing committees.
You do have a list of standing committees and I have identified vacancies that have been created by Jake and Miss Cur's departure. Last meeting, Isabel graciously accepted the provisional advisory role and I hope that she's still okay with that. She didn't accept it, I kind of say, you should do this. But we do have vacancies for the Negotiations Committee, that fourth member would be a substitute for anybody that could not make it. Policy Committee, drop-off prevention, attendance committee, and then educator effectiveness committee. Just to kind of preface that, this year was weird because of COVID. So we didn't have nearly any committee meetings. But negotiations is more of a heavier role, especially during a negotiation. You can plan on, you know, meeting maybe three, four times throughout the negotiation process. Policy committee usually target at least three meetings a year. So that's usually the usual goal, one every three, four months. So three, four meetings a year. Drop-off prevention is usually once a year unless we need to make it more. And then educator effectiveness is as needed, and that one hasn't been needed for quite some time.
I'll take that one.
Ben, there was some talk at our last negotiations committee meeting of, and Doug still here? Of connecting, like, there was some talk of educator effectiveness when we were doing negotiations.
Yeah.
Do you think, I mean, if we decide to do it, then maybe it should just be a subset of the negotiations committee? Because it seems to be tied very closely. Do we need a separate committee if it barely ever meets? I guess what I'm saying.
You just need a representative who can get invited to those meetings. Not by law. So we don't need it. I can roll that in there if you want.
It just looks better if we don't have an empty spot.
Do you see anything?
I was just going to say, I can fill any vacancies that you think would be most beneficial to have someone. My schedule's pretty open right now.
Having been a recent graduate, maybe we drop off prevention attendance?
Sure.
Policy committee, really excited.
That would be a good one, too.
If you want me to, I can.
And on the negotiations committee, I think if one of us three that are on it can't make it, we find a board member that to replace us. We can find a board member, can call and say, hey, if you take my place, I can make it.
As long as we have two people, I don't care. Just a couple times, or just me.
Yeah.
And that was, I don't, as much as I like fighting with union reps from Portland, it's not what I want to do.
We'd have a floor.
Okay.
So that works. So we won't fill the last negotiations committee vacancy. We have Abby for policy. We have Abby for drop-off prevention. And we dropped the educator effectiveness rep and will pull from the negotiations.
Move on to new business requirements, re-creation, et cetera.
I have no requirement. So did we receive, no, we have not received a requirement. Did we receive a requirement?
We did, but texted me.
I can't remember. I think we received one yesterday, the day before, but I can't remember. It was, it was an email. It wasn't a formal letter. I'll bring it to you next meeting because I did request for a formal letter. So when I get the formal letter, so. No transfers, no new hires, no current openings. Well, we do have a running opening for the entire year for a student pathologist. That's the only thing we have right now.
You want the school calendar?
Yeah. So you have a coffee.
Sorry. Were we going to bring up the need for a full-time?
You said?
That's, that's going to be done in a decade.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah. With school calendar, we, the first one that we're talking about is the current school calendar. And when we had the meeting, the emergency meeting when the pandemic began, the board did approve any changes to the calendar to be done without bringing to the board. I've been fortunate enough to bring most of the changes to you in advance. But there was a change that occurred on December 16. We moved the workshop day to fit with a hybrid schedule. We had moved it from a Friday to a Wednesday. And I did not get board approval for that. But it was important that we, because we want to align those PD days because we do have shared PD with other school districts. So I don't know if the board wants to bring future changes to you. I won't abuse the privilege you've given me to make those changes when I need to. It's just that sometimes, you know, things occur and I look ahead to a next board meeting. And, you know, I just have to use my judgment. I had to call an emergency board meeting to have a change of a workshop day. So I don't know how you guys want me to proceed with this school year. But I did want to bring that to your attention if you wanted to know that.
I think for the most part, it's been working fine. You know, like, was it 23rd? You emailed me about going for my half-day or half-day day, or full-day day, whatever. And that was fun. I contacted Sarah, Vice Chair. I think it's just so we know, and it doesn't come from the public of, hey, what just happened?
And I think part of that was there was a, families were planning on a school on a Friday, and then all of a sudden, it was Monday, and it wasn't even like a week's notice.
Right.
And then we, I didn't know about it ahead of time. So it kind of puts me in a crappy spot, or any of us in a crappy spot, to try to be-
And we won't do that unless it's, you know, unless it's something that we didn't even realize and that it's last minute. And I'll try not to do last-minute things like that again. I always want to give you guys information while in advance. I'm trying to do that more and more, not only just the chair, the vice chair, but the board. Probably get 50 emails from me a day. And I want to continue that. So you're in the know.
Yeah, I mean, my issue is that it was short notice. And when the board said, we're giving you great latitude, I thought it was because if there was an emergency, and I mean, from my perspective, a PD day was not an emergency. And even an email would have been sufficient for me. I mean, I think it was just, I think we gave the latitude with the understanding that we were, it was because, you know, we had this huge COVID thing, and we needed to move all the kids one day, and we couldn't do anything. This was the only day it was available. Then yes, I mean, get it. But a PD day didn't feel like an emergency.
Yeah.
So that was where my reaction came from.
And I'll try, at least by email at first. So it gives you guys time to say, wait a minute, I think we need to discuss this.
Yeah, that's all I want.
Okay.
Ben, you can go back. I sent, I forwarded you an email.
Oh, okay. So can we go back to resignations?
Sorry, the retirement.
Retirements? I do have a retirement notification. This is from Mary Wallett, who worked on the Chippy Center. I'm ready to inform you that I have decided to retire at the end of the school year. I think it's time for me to travel and enjoy my retirement. Please let me know if there's any paperwork to fill out. So if the board wishes to accept Mary Wallett's-
Go on.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any amendments? School calendar 2021, 22.
So I do have a draft of the 21, 22 school calendar. It looks a lot like this year's school calendar, similar start date, similar end date. Whenever we're building the calendar, we always send a teacher survey out to make sure that we're getting that information. So you should have the survey results in your packet as well. The first question that we asked staff was, which date best fits your position on the school year calendar? And you can see the majority would like a later start in August versus an early end in June. So this calendar does reflect a later start in August. That goes with the majority of the teachers. Number two, to begin the school year, would you prefer one workshop day or two back-to-back before the first school day? The majority prefer two back-to-back. So we did build two back-to-back workshop days in the calendar draft. Number three is about Christmas. What is your preference on the last day before the Christmas break? And 51% of the majority say that it should be on Wednesday, the 22nd. So that's where we plugged it in on the calendar. Number four is specific to the latter of team time. And this is if we're outside of COVID and back to quote-unquote "normal." What would your preference be for PD time? And the majority have chosen one early release a month. So we built that in as well. Question five and six are specific to the harvest break. And although it was clear, I wanted to get just the elementary staff to weigh in. So you have a separate sheet here that asks a clarifying question just to the elementary staff. And that clarifying question is, specific to harvest break, rank the statement that best fits your opinion. And you can see that the majority of FKBS staff, you're looking at the Blue Band's, they fully support the two-week harvest break. They want to be on the same schedule as the middle high school. So right now, in the draft, that's how we built it in. You can see the back-to-school dates. We have two groups, group one and group two. 4th Penn Elementary School falls into group one with CHS and DRMS, where they would start on the 23rd. The teachers would start on the 23rd and finish on the 25th. And both schools would break for harvest per the preference of the majority of teachers. I like the breakdown in quarters. They're all exactly 44 days. That's amazing. Usually we have some discrepancies, so glad that worked out well. And everything else is pretty much the same as used to before. We did not plug in an early release on November, and that's because it is a shortened month with the Thanksgiving break and also the Veterans Day holiday. So we plugged in a Valley workshop day right after that holiday instead as the PD option.
What are your thoughts on both schools having harvest break? I know we've talked about, and the teachers have talked about how it was disadvantageous to the kids, to the younger kids, come back for a few weeks, or start for a few weeks and then have a couple weeks off. And then it was kind of like starting all over again.
Yeah. I even, I put out three drafts. One of them was what you see here. Another option that I provided was a one-week elementary harvest break. So that second week of harvest, we would have called it fall recess or fall break. And that would have been, so the elementary would have, you know, gone for one week and then break for one week. And the survey results still came back with the majority of your staff in favor of that two-week break. And I think that's because it separates families. From an education standpoint, as an elementary educator, I would not have liked a two-week break, you know, only four weeks into the school year. I was a big believer in the first, you know, the first 10 days sets the foundation, and then you're off and running from there. I feel that the harvest break is a startover. So for me, on an education standpoint, I have issues with it. But I understand that on a family aspect and on an ideal travel schedule aspect because of how things align up. Traditionally, the families here count on it. This year is unique in where they, the elementary did not get that harvest break. And the feedback I got was they felt that stretch from August to Thanksgiving break was really long. They felt that that was, that was an extremely long stretch, which is why I thought maybe the one-week fall break would have been a great. But I didn't get any. Well, I got some, but no.
Got a good chunk.
Yeah.
I mean, that was a close second.
Yep.
How did the other districts feel about the one-week? I'm guessing Frenchville's not all-
Frenchville would have, the majority would have liked that.
Really?
Yes.
Madawaska?
Madawaska, the majority do not want harvest break at all. A clear majority. Because they've never, they haven't had harvest for the elementary schools in years. How many years, Ben?
For Emma, we went one year, tried it, and they didn't like it.
Yeah.
So under the shared calendar, they're getting it?
What's that?
Under the shared calendar, are they taking an elementary school break or no?
The-
Madawaska.
Oh, Madawaska, right here, you'll see that their board approved this. They would be starting in group two, which is the elementary starting on the 7th.
Okay, okay, I see, I see.
Yeah.
I move to accept the calendar.
Second.
Second. Yeah, I did. Sorry.
I am sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor? Board meeting date.
So I put this just in case you guys did not want to wait until our next board meeting. This is actually our January meeting that, this is actually our January, February meeting that we booked up. So right now, you're slated for, excuse me. Your regular January meeting was January 25. We moved it up here. Your next meeting is only scheduled for March 8. So I didn't know if you wanted to schedule a meeting between then or if you're comfortable waiting for March 8. Or if you just want to wait and see if we need a meeting, then we'll call one at that time.
I personally would like to wait and see and maybe have one in February, but pick a date later.
Would I have that feeling?
Well, we also have the next agenda item is the planning workshop, which is also right around those days, or potentially.
So that might be a concern as a next meeting.
But that would be a workshop, not necessarily an official meeting?
Yeah, if we advertise it as a workshop with no wooing, then we can do that. We still have to post because you gather all together, but maybe no wooing.
So I guess the question I would have is when, when are we? Because I don't remember. Right now, the plan is to go into hybrid next week. And then how long are we in hybrid before we go full-on if we follow the plan?
Two weeks.
What's the date?
February 1.
February what?
1.
We want to shoot her like February 9 and adjust if needed.
Yeah, I mean, if, I guess my, the only reservation I have is if something comes up between now and when we go to full, I think we should probably have a talk. You know, if we end up with a, you know, we have some sort of COVID issue in town or whatever, I mean, we're going to have to have a discussion. That's why I was wondering if we could make it slightly overlap, but it doesn't quite line up. So yeah, February 9 is how it would be.
Yeah, better leave it up to Gary and Ben to call a special board.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what I did.
But I'm fine with February 9, for regular meeting.
Motion to set February 9 as our next meeting date?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And? Retreat?
I didn't work though. So I know, I know you all have jobs and, you know, so I know a weekday may not work for you. But I also know that snow is on the way, and Mr. Sibley and I got new sleds. We need to be riding with the wind on weekends. So I didn't know if you wanted to target a weekend or if you want to target a weekday. I didn't know if you wanted half a day. And that could be a morning, it could be an afternoon. It can be a late afternoon into early evening. I didn't know what your thoughts were. But I did provide some dates that are open for me, highlighting that though, obviously, the weekdays are more open for me to weekends. But those weekends are still available. but those weekends are still available as well. So I thought we'd talk about that. And my thought was, prior to this meeting, having you all chime in things that you wanted to an agenda, and then I would build the agenda based on that.
Isabel, any preference?
Um, I guess it all depends on what time it would be at. Just because on some, like, obviously I'm in college, so like some, I'll have college classes at night, some on some nights, and then during the day I'm pretty open, but it all depends on what you guys want.
The retreats that I've been to were always on a weekend and always in the morning. And you were done by noon time. And after 12 o'clock, you had a beverage and pizza.
Barry, can you turn your mask inside out?
No.
Our phones have been lit up here for quite a while, and there's some upset.
What does it say? I can't, I can't see it from here.
Address code violation.
I, I have to say something, I'm sorry. I'm the dean of stewardess in this school.
You know what it says.
But your phone, phones lighten up.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
At least it's been said.
I'll try to find another one. Being noted, being noted, the board member was not aware of what he was dawning on his face.
Okay.
He can fire me.
Do you have any preference?
Uh, I really have no preference. I'm, I'm in the same boat as Barry as far as, you know, my experience with past board workshops or retreats, it was on a Saturday. A late afternoon, if the evening would be fine for me as well. I'm flexible.
What about you?
Over.
Oh, me? That's true, I'm talking. Sorry. I don't, I don't care. I got, February 5 is out, so record that day. Otherwise, I don't care. I'm not terribly excited about doing a weekend, but if we need to, I will.
Yeah.
Any of these work for me, anything but Sundays?
Um, probably the 10th, if I went through the 10th, would not work for me, otherwise I, I can make up with anything.
Pretty much accomplished nothing.
Well, we've eliminated two dates, Gary. That's better than.
If we did it more towards the end of February, maybe the beginning of March.
I agree with Gary. I agree with Gary to make it later because we, there's a lot of stuff that's gonna happen between now and February 9, and we might have some different topics to talk about.
Just bear in mind that our inter-local agreement does call for a budget to be co by March 15 for Valley and Ohio. With emergency extensions in March 30, so just want to throw that out there.
I think we need to address this, that, I need, we need to have a direction sooner rather than later. Because we need to let our partners know of what we're planning on doing, what we're thinking.
What about this month, Ben? You gotta check your calendar, like, between now and the end of January.
I can make Friday the 22nd work. I can make Saturday the 23rd work. Thursday the 28th work.
Is Friday the 22nd work, Curly? If you did, January 22nd.
It's the one day in the calendar.
But how about the 23rd? How's that looking? February 1.
Be okay as long as you don't have ski season starts by then.
I can make Thursday the 21st work.
That's next Thursday?
Yes.
Next Thursday work could be.
What time, morning or afternoon? I record at 8:30 and record at 1:00. I don't expect 1:00 to last long. I could pop in after 1:00, please. I don't know. Is that 4:00?
We can do a 3 to 6 or a 4 to 7.
Well, as long as, like I said, I, I think I'll be done by 1:30. So we could do like 1:30 or 2:00.
Sure.
I, I, I just question, are we have enough information by then to talk about stuff? Or is it still gonna be all this theoretical, we don't know, because stuff has been decided or?
Well, I, I don't think the, I think the Board of Education is set to meet again like February 2nd or 3rd. And then we'll have a more definitive answer on what's going on on the Augusta end. I guess we'd almost have to wait until then.
I, I could say that we have our meeting on February 9, and then we decide from there. Our next meeting's scheduled for February 9.
So we hold off on the retreat for now and just schedule a board meeting?
I can add this to the event list for February 9. They will check the calendar.
So we'll put the retreat on again?
I'm trying.
So the other dates didn't work for anyone?
The February dates always.
The 19th, 13th.
There's hesitation to have it on Saturdays because of ski season.
Okay.
And these dads wanting to tend to me.
You can't, not, too many people. I mean, Fridays, I mean, we've got the.
The 12th through the 19th?
The 12th and the 19th. Anybody have any strong feelings with the 12th and the 19th?
Well, I, I'm gonna stick to it. We're having a scheduled meeting for February 9, right?
By the 12th and the 19th, Barry, I'm telling you right now, my 12th and 19th, by the 9th, my 12th and 19th are probably.
What month are you in, on the 12th and 19th?
What's that?
You're in February.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if we're gonna have a meeting, I want it to be.
I guess what I'm saying is four days before I have to clear my calendar?
Pick a date?
I'm asking, but you, you're sounding like you don't want it until we get to.
Well.
I just worry, because we put this off for a year.
Can we then go back and maybe hold off on the 9th meeting and say, let's do, pick the 12th? Has the Powell do, and then see if we want to do Monday after?
A board meeting after that?
A board meeting.
Well, we already voted on the 9th, so why don't we just stick with that? Go with the 19th and play it by ear. Ben's gonna solicit responses from all of us as far as board topic or retreat topics. And based on what those topics are, maybe we'll have what we need at the time.
Can we set a tentative date for the 19th?
Yeah, we'll do that. Very interesting.
Quite dare ask a time?
6 AM. I'm kidding.
Take 3 or 4 o'clock?
My, my preference is 4 to 7.
I'll grab a 4 to 7. Does that mean fair?
Yeah.
Okay, motion to set board planning workshop for February 19.
Tentative.
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 Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Need a motion to enter into second session?
Subway.
Second.
Need discussion? All those in favor?
This one is specific to personal employment. So glad I need you to stay, I need you to stay. I was about to say.